All right, thank you for joining us. Before we start the meeting, a couple of quick public service announcements. For an emergency, please note the exits on either side of the chambers and proceed down the stairs. Bathrooms are located out the door to my left over here, the women's room to the right, men's room is to the left. We allow 30 minutes for public speaking. If you have not done so already, please sign up at the podium or through the Zoom chat by raising your Zoom hand. Please note the council does have rules of decorum for our meetings, including the public speaking portion of the meeting. We ask that respect be shown to all, whether they serve on the council and the staff or are here as a public member. I'm now calling this common council meeting to order at 7:37 PM on September 12, 2023. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence as we remember all the lives lost 22 years ago on November 11 yesterday. Thank you, may be seated. May I please have roll call?
Alderman Pastie.
Present.
Alderman Frankel.
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Here.
Alderman Worthington.
Here.
Alderman Mohammed.
Excused.
Alderman Dennison.
Here.
Alderman Shabbat.
Here.
Alderman Hirsch.
Here.
We have a quorum. Can I have a motion to dispense for the minutes of the previous meeting and approve same? Motion by Carl Frankel, second by Michelle Hirsch, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted seven to zero. Can I have a motion to dispense for the reading of the general bills?
Motion.
Motion by Renee Scott Childress, second by Steve Shabbat, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted seven to zero. As council members, we get the chance to meet folks from throughout the city and from all walks of life. Throughout our service on the council, we meet community members who truly move us with their acts of kindness and their efforts to better our community. Tonight, we recognize and honor a community member who has gone above and beyond to serve and help others with our Common Council Community Award. This month, we are delighted to present Charlene Bevieu with the award. She was selected by Alderwoman Rita Worthington, and at this time, I invite Charlene to join Rita at the podium in the center.
Close, 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 okay. Good evening, everyone. So I chose Charlene Bevieu as our recipient of our Common Council Award because she's just amazing. So a little bit about her. So she is a certified daycare provider here in Kingston. She runs her own business. She's been doing that for 15 years here in the city of Kingston. And prior to that, she worked at the Agro-Cultural Business Center in New Paltz for 15 years as a daycare provider. Prior to that, she left here, she moved to Florida where she served nine years as a substitute teacher, six years with the Albany City School District. And she is also the treasurer of the grassroots organization here in the city of Kingston, Harambe. She serves as the treasurer there. And so I'm a little biased tonight because Charlene is my big cousin, because big cousin. But I've watched her be a role model to the many children that she serves. Few of them are here tonight. Just a quick story about, I don't know, about 12, 13, 14 years ago, I had the opportunity to work with Charlene on a case where she brought in baby girls, two at the time, right, two at the time. And she took these kids in, and she cared for them, and she nurtured them, and she fell in love with them, and so she adopted them. She didn't just stop there with the two baby girls, she also found their sister, and she adopted her. And they are here tonight, stand up, girls. And say, so she just keeps adding to our family, they are my little cousins. And so I'm just so delighted and happy that she gets this award today. She is truly deserving of it. I've never seen somebody give so much of theirselves to other people, and especially to our children. She, it's just amazing how she pours into them, and I get to witness it almost every day. And so I'm glad to present this award to you, I'm going to read it, what it says here. Certificate of Honor presented by the City of Kingston Common Council in recognition of your efforts to better our community and to serve as a positive light to others, to Charlene Bevieu. So thank you. She doesn't want to say anything, but that goes to her character, it's all about someone else other than her.
Thank you, Charlene. And for the folks who were here for the award, you do not have to feel obligated to stick around for the meeting, you're welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, we also will not blame you for that. We're now entering into the public speaking portion of the meeting, we have allotted 30 minutes for this purpose. Speakers will have three minutes. If there are remaining speakers after 30 minutes, I will call for a motion from the council to extend the period for another 30 minutes. Speakers, direct your comments to the chair as council members cannot engage in debate during this time. Please state your name and address on the record before you begin. For the audience both in chambers and on Zoom, there can be no distractions when a speaker is addressing the council. The common council has also received written comments for our consideration, and they could be found on the city's website under tonight's agenda. We had a number of folks sign up ahead of time, we're going to go through those names first, and then we'll go through the names that signed up here. The first speaker, please.
Penny Hazer.
Good evening, my name is Penny Hazer, I am president and founder of the Merit Apprenticeship Alliance. It's wonderful to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again. I was reading, I was listening to the comments of the common council meeting last month, and listening to those comments regarding the city's resolution to implement an apprenticeship requirement, it occurred to me that my message perhaps has not been as clear as I think it needs to be. During that conversation, there was a concern raised that the resolution that you have proposed, I believe it's 204 of 2022, which is to be voted on, I believe next month, that apprenticeship programs have to have at least a 30% graduation rate. Let me state for the record, we support that qualifying apprenticeship programs should have a minimum graduation threshold of 30%. We agree with you. That is, that is a minimum threshold, and quite honestly, it could be higher. Because graduation rates reflect a sponsor or a program's ability to support an apprentice through graduation, right? It's a process. We object, however, to one line in that resolution. It's just one line. And specifically, that line says that a qualifying apprenticeship program must have, must provide documentation verifying a minimum of three trade-specific graduates per calendar year for the last five years. That's a section that we object to. The 30%, we have our graduation rates as the alliance, as a multi-employer, open shop, apprenticeship program sponsor, 69, 67, and 50% as we speak right now. So we agree with that, that concept of a minimum threshold. If you were to couple a minimum graduation threshold of 30% with a requirement that your contractors who have those apprenticeship program agreements employ an apprentice on your job sites, put City of Kingston money into construction contracts that employ City of Kingston and the surrounding area residents. If you add an apprenticeship utilization requirement-
30 seconds.
...then you will actually achieve your mission to promote apprenticeship and workforce development in the area. It's a win-win. So we support the 30%, we suggest that you add an apprenticeship utilization requirement because that will engage not only the contractor community, but it will also help support further graduation efforts. I've given the council a list of samples from other municipalities, I have prepared statements that I will provide to the chair, I'm happy to answer any questions at any time.
Thank you. Time is, and if, and if anybody wants to say more in the three minutes, sorry, you could always email us comments.
Should I hand these to you, to somebody?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Val Dwyer. Val Dwyer.
I just want to make sure you can hear me. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Val Dwyer, City of Kingston resident and president of Arald Construction. We employ 60 people and currently, one-third of them are under the age of 30. Last year, our employees under the age of 30 had gross annual wages that averaged $119,000. We pride ourselves on the job opportunities we have given to our local youth. And in recent years, we have even teamed up with Dan Whalen of the Boys and Girls Club in an effort to reach more youth to provide opportunities they may not normally have access to. We also have an apprenticeship program through the Merit Alliance. And because of the resolution you passed last year, our employees can no longer work on projects in the City of Kingston that are funded with our tax dollars. Thanks to the recorded council and committee meetings, I was able to hear the blatant lies that Mike Hamm of Local 825 has been feeding you about our program. For the record, we do graduate apprentices and our graduation rate far exceeds the 30% you're asking for. Our issue with the resolution is the second requirement of three graduates for each trade for each of the last five years. We actually foiled Local 825 and the results showed that even they don't meet this requirement. Mike Hamm claims that the Department of Labor is lying. So we went back again and now the DOL says they can't give us that information. I think for that reason, the city has no choice but to repeal this requirement as it can't be confirmed. Yes, Mike Hamm is from Kingston and he brags about how big his program is and how much money he puts into it. He makes it seem local, but what he isn't telling you is that his union covers the entire state of New Jersey and only a very small portion of New York. He boasts about how he has 9,000 workers, but then he says they only hire 10 apprentices a year. That's 0.1% of his workforce. What's to say that one of those apprentices will even step foot on a job in the City of Kingston? Odds are they won't. And that's the irony. All of this noise about apprenticeship programs is just another tactic in his playbook to ensure that he, that only he gets work around here. Why now? Because the new Tappan Zee project is complete and he is so desperate to find work that he's trying to find ways to shut out competition and to compromise the competitive bidding process. He's even gone as far as being the mayor's largest campaign contributor in the last election with a $3,000 donation. And now magically, after that donation, all of the work is being given to him. Either through this apprenticeship requirement or even through other tactics like the PLA on the Deed Stadium project. Follow the money. This is unethical and it's called pay to play. Our company has worked for hundreds of municipalities all across New York State with our largest customer being the actual state of New York. We have never in 50 years, until last year, been told that we can't work on a project.
Thank you.
Ironically, it's our hometown that's shutting us out.
Val, if you didn't get through everything, please feel free to email me and I could share it with the council. Next speaker, please.
Tom Peterson, Jr.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. My name is Tom Peterson, Jr. and I'm here tonight to ask you to repeal Resolution 204 of 2022 as it relates to apprentice programs on construction contracts. I was born and raised here in Kingston and graduated across the street at the Kingston High School in 2006. I began working for Arald Construction in 2007 at 19 years old. I am a graduate of Arald's apprenticeship program and proof of what a successful program it is. In fact, one of my first of many projects I've been part of in this city, I was an apprentice working on a sewer line project on Montreux Street. After graduating from the Merit Apprenticeship Program, I worked as a laborer and after a promotion, I am now one of their job superintendents. I am currently overseeing a $3 million rail trail project off of Washington Avenue in the City of Kingston that we are doing for Ulster County. Through my employment with Arald, my wife and I have been able to purchase a home in this community where we are raising our three children. My wife is employed as a teacher in the Kingston School District and our families are deeply rooted in this community. However, because of your new resolution, we have been shut out and our company can no longer do business with the City of Kingston. My coworkers that are here with me tonight and their families are here asking for you to please support local business and their employees and repeal Resolution 204 so we can continue working in this city. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Ryan Baker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Baker and I was a 2016 graduate of Kingston High School. And I then went on to be a 2019 engineering graduate of Clarkson University. Once I graduated, I returned back to my hometown of Kingston to work for Arald Construction. I remember sitting at my high school graduation in 2016 when Mayor Noble was the guest speaker. He spoke about how his main goal was to attract new business to the area and create jobs for us so we could return after going to college and work in the community. Now here we are, seven years later. I've been working in the community for four years. I purchased a home in the community. Most importantly, I'm up in front of you speaking about how Resolution 204 of 2022 prohibits me and my coworkers from working in the city. It appears the mission of the city has changed in the last seven years. Resolution 204 claims it is updating the language of past resolutions to better suit the needs of utilizing local workforce. However, this resolution only excludes utilization of local workforce. It sets a 30% graduation rate, which our program meets without any issue, but it also requires three graduates per year. Due to the smaller side of our company, it's impractical. We employ about 40 trade workers and we've had one local apprentice on our staff for the last four years since I've been here. Now, local unions, they say they have like about 9,000 employees and they bring on 10 apprentices a year. It's a four-year program, so over the course, that means about 40 apprentices every year. So 40 out of 9,000 is about one out of every 225. We have one out of every 40. That means we make five times the impact with our apprenticeship program than they do. We have already been doing exactly what Resolution 204 claims to do. The resolution is prohibiting us from working in the community where we all live. Please also understand that our apprenticeship program is only one way that Arald invests in the young workforce in the community. One-third of our workforce is under 30 years old. That means that we hire, train many young people in the community who are not so-called apprentices, but we invest in them the same way. To further our employee training, we hold yearly safety training for all our workers every year. And we invest in our older employees as well, just as the apprentices. With this, I ask that you repeal Resolution 204 of 2022 by passing Resolution 141 of 2023. This will allow us, truly, local workforce to continue working on local projects that are funded by us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Matt Van Valkenburg.
Good evening. My name is Matt Van Valkenburg and I work for Arald Construction. I am here tonight to ask you to repeal Resolution 204 of 2022 as it relates to apprenticeship programs. I began working for Arald Construction in 2020 at 24 years old. I am a graduate of their apprenticeship program. Arald kept me working even through COVID and I was able to graduate their apprenticeship program without a delay. Through my employment with Arald, my wife and I have been able to purchase a home in this community where we are raising our first child. After graduating from their program, I now work as a laborer for them. However, because of our new resolution, I've been shut out and can no longer work on a contract in the City of Kingston. We support local businesses and their employees and repeal Resolution 204. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tom Peterson, Senior.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Peterson. I have been employed of Arald Construction since 1983. I was born and raised here in Kingston. I am here to address a few comments made to you on August 16th committee meeting by Mike Hamm. And I quote, "I am a bulldozer operator, that is what I do." That is what he is doing to Resolution 179. He says he's here to build a relationship with you. Well, I'll tell you how to build a relationship. It's years of hard work, safety, and commitment to our city. Arald Construction has been working for this city for the last 39 years I have been employed here. We have worked on many projects for this city with many administrations over the years. Everyone has been good to work with, including department heads. I never thought I'd have to stand here before you all, saving my job and my coworkers' right to work in this great city. Arald has deep roots in this community. Mike called out that we don't have a graduate graduation rate for apprentices and he should tell you all the truth if he's going to report to this council. I bid on projects every day with union and non-union contractors. Some we win, some we lose. We even work as subcontractors to union contractors. I know all the local union contractors I bid against and never once has any of them said to me, "I shouldn't be bidding this or you shouldn't be awarded this project." They've all been gentlemen and every one of them calls us to help them out from time to time. Again, we have relationships with them all. The one looking to grease his hand is Mike Hamm. The workers are working. Mike called out that we don't train our employees. Well, that's not true either. We have one-on-one with our apprentices, training them every day. We have yearly classroom trainings every winter for all our employees. We take safety seriously. Earlier this year, my phone rang at 3:45 in the morning from a department head of this city asking if I could help him out with a water main break as he was losing the hole. Within an hour, we had a truck there to assist him. Arald Construction was the company that went 90 feet under Washington Avenue in a tunnel to remove grout and finally repaired a sinkhole on Washington Avenue. In February of 2015, in the middle of the Sawkill Creek, at 10 below zero and snowing, an 18-inch transmission line from the water plant to the Binning Water Reservoir, the hospital's fourth floor had no water pressure and the reservoir was in three feet of being empty. Arald worked day and night until that repair was made. That's building a relationship.
30 seconds.
I just saw over a donation to the city, to the city by Arald Construction at the World War II Memorial on Delaware Avenue. And if you go over to the Boys and Girls Club, Biddy Basketball, and the Juliana Hudson, see who the sponsors are. It's Arald Construction. The only thing Mike Hamm has donated is to the mayor's reelection campaign and that's why he's bulldozing you all on the issues the mayor is allowing it. The same way the PLA was assigned to Deed Stadium, I can't wait to see what that's going to cost and how long it takes to complete.
Thank you, sir. Time is up. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Nate Hamilton.
Good evening. My name is Nate Hamilton and I work for Arald Construction in Kingston, New York. I am here tonight to ask you to reverse Resolution 204 as it relates to apprentice programs. I began working for Arald Construction earlier this year and I am currently enrolled in their apprenticeship program as a first-year apprentice. This job has given me so many opportunities for my growth and for my future. Not only am I making a lot more money than I was with my last employer, but now I also have health benefits and a 401K plan. To have the opportunities I have with Arald is very unusual for someone my age. I don't understand why the City of Kingston wouldn't support my apprenticeship with Arald. Please support local business and their employees and repeal Resolution 204 so that I can continue on working in projects in our community. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Dave Lisbada.
He's not here. Next speaker, please.
Denise Howard.
Not here. Next speaker, please.
Mike Hamm.
Not here. Next speaker, please.
Rick Whitney.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rick Whitney. I'm the general manager with Marcy Excavation Services as well as the chairman for Merit Alliance. I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to speak here tonight. As chairman of the Merit Alliance, I am proud that three of our apprenticeship programs have graduation rate above 50%. We, we work hard to retain our, and graduate good apprentices. We pay their schooling and travel, provide good benefits, and partner with quality contractors to provide unemployment, employment, excuse me. We fully support the City of Kingston's resolution that requires for any general construction contract have approved apprenticeship agreements that have graduation rate of 30%. We object, however, to line Resolution 204 of 2022, which arbitrarily qualifies only apprenticeship program sponsors such that each trade apprenticeship program must provide documentation verifying a minimum of three trade-specific graduates per calendar year for the last five years. This requirement negatively impacts small contractors and programs as they simply may not employ enough workers to have three apprentices per year. This one line requiring three trade-specific graduates per calendar year for the last five years will limit competition, decrease opportunities for workers, and increase costs to city taxpayers. We suggest that the city simply adopt the 30% graduation threshold and require contractors to employ apprentices on city projects. This approach, approach will help the city employ local workers, save taxpayers money. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bill Cranston.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address the Common Council. A brief introduction, I'm Bill Cranston, the owner of 666 Broadway LLC located at the corner of Broadway and Downs. And also the owner of Boulevard Wine and Spirits located at the corner of Green Hill Avenue and Route 32. I grew up in the city, left for New York after high school to return to Kingston in 2016. I'm here this evening to address two significant concerns facing Midtown Kingston, specifically the corridor of Broadway between Elmendorf and Downs. I need to preface these concerns by stating it's not my intention to single out any one group of people. I, along with the organizations I'm heavily involved in, have worked to continue, have worked tremendously hard for a safe and thriving Midtown community for all people, regardless of who you are or where you are from. I'm merely stating what I see every day on a corner that I have worked tremendously hard to improve, including providing a safe and peaceful living environment for those that call 666 Broadway home. Kingston has worked extraordinarily hard, invested a tremendous amount of money on both the Linear Park, which runs through the Midtown Corridor, and the Broadway Streetscape projects. The Linear Park is rapidly declining back into a dangerous place to traverse, even in broad daylight. Opening and rampant drug use and abuse are commonplace. I frequently run this path and am now advising friends and family to steer clear as you will consistently encounter people administering needles to themselves and others, often leaving biological waste powder along the path with other garbage and waste. Broadway Streetscape saw the redoing of an entire corridor with brand-new sidewalks, light fixtures, benches, plants, and more. This corridor is being overrun in oftentimes and passable with large groups, large groups of people gathering, unregulated food trucks, illegally parked cars blocking intersections, loud music, and garbage. Correct me if I'm wrong, but does the City of Kingston have any regulations whatsoever at the moment on food trucks? Specifically, the truck on Downstreet is fed by two 100-pound liquid petroleum gas cylinders. This seems, this would seem to be a significant fire and safety issue. It also completely blocks the field divisions for cars exiting a City of Kingston municipal lot. I would also be remiss not to mention the dangerous living conditions for the people at 660 Broadway who, according to a publicly accessible City of Kingston database, have not had a passing safety inspection since 2011. The disenfranchised are being taken advantage of at the hands of greedy landlord who flaunt the rules and collect cash rent off the books. I realize the City of Kingston is striving to be an inclusive city. What is transpiring reality is that some businesses are complying with the existing rules and regulations while others are simply flaunting them with a zero regard for the overall wellness,
30 seconds.
cleanliness and safety of the community. The most, during my Heritage Area Commission hearings for 66 Broadway, I had to repeatedly refer to justify paint color, window side signage, even down to the color of the clock on the sidewalks. Yet now, within that same Heritage Area Commission jurisdiction, we are met with giant food trucks, plastic tables and chairs and sidewalks, plastic tents and grills, loudspeakers, broken windows, doors, etc. We are all part of the Midtown community. Either we start following same sort of rules, who are currently following them, will quickly realize the rapid depreciation of the business.
Time is up.
Thank you.
If you would like to... If you would like to submit those comments.
Thank you.
I was just informed that the comments were submitted, so you could read the full comments on the website, council members. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Joe DeFalco.
Thank you, Council President, Joe DeFalco. I live at Sixty-Six Glen Street. I'm going to give a history lesson now on the easement up on Glen Street. Now, thirty years ago, Chief Reinhardt, chief of the Fire Department, said he needed that easement opened so he could get to his fire hydrants. Upon inspecting it, there were no fire hydrants for him to get to. Long now, Chief Brown becomes the chief, and this issue is on his table, and he does a survey, and he does a test. And he tests the trucks going up Route 32 or going up Glen Street and discovers that it doesn't take any longer for his trucks to get to the Golden Hill Nursing Home. So we will no longer use Glen Street. Along comes Chris Reyes, and I believe this was a political decision, and said he needed Glen Street to get to the nursing home. I don't believe that's true. He made that decision with no evidence and no survey or nothing. So he made a political decision. Okay, moving on, the project of Penrose. You cannot depend on them telling you the truth, because they've been lying since the presentation of this project. They've been brought up on ethical charges for these things, okay? They'll tell you, "How much blasting are you going to do?" Well, we don't know how much blasting we're going to do, but we're going to do some blasting. Now, wait a minute. Where does a construction company that does cost samples of the site and doesn't know where they're going to be blasted? They're not telling you the truth, okay? They've been lying to you since the beginning. Next, I want to talk to you about an intersection that cost us three million bucks, when the county did a survey of all the intersections on Broadway from Burger King to 287, and discovered that the intersection on Grand Street was the least prone intersection for accidents. I believe that the three million dollars that they spent at that intersection was a cover-up for the mayor's indiscretional real estate deals. And it was piloted by this alderman in the third ward, and that intersection is in the fifth ward.
Thirty seconds.
Okay? I know I got thirty seconds. You don't have to remind me, Council President. His ward. He's piloting something in another ward, okay? You just distracted me by me having to remind you not to remind me that I had thirty seconds.
I will give you extra fifteen seconds for that.
But that's okay. I will be back to finish this conversation. I have to go to the county building and give them the same education. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Ryan. Ryan Arold.
My name is Ryan Arold. I graduated at KHS, right across the street, in 2001, and I'm the Vice President of Arold Construction, located here in Kingston. This year, we celebrated being in business for fifty years. Several of those years, we have performed work with the city of Kingston. Quite often, the city calls me directly when they have an issue or a problem they don't have the resources to resolve. In fact, just last week, the engineering department called me for help regarding some failing sewer mains within the city. One other occasion I'm sure you're all aware of is the prolonged issues that occurred on Washington Avenue with the sinkhole. I was deeply involved in resolving that issue. Ultimately, we were the last contractor that was there, that permanently fixed the disaster that was going on within the city and gave all of you headaches for years. When the city calls, we always step up to support them. Not only do we support the government side of the city, we also have donated to several organizations within this city: sports programs, veterans, school programs, social programs, and most importantly, organizations that support individuals who are not as fortunate as all of us. As I stand here today, I can't even fathom the thought that the city is considering shutting us out of work. I don't think any of you realize the impact this will have on the city. Along with excavating, utility installation, and paving, we also provide highly specialized services that only a few contractors in New York State provide. Resolving underground utilities issues without excavating them is one of those specialties. If this law were to pass, we would no longer be able to provide these services to the city of Kingston. When a sewer or water main fails and the city needs to get it fixed right away, we will not be available. This will not only result in resolving the issue being more difficult, it will also be a huge financial burden on the taxpayers, since the city's only option will be to dig up the utility rather than repair them as they like.
Thirty seconds.
Unfortunately, due to the nature of this type of work, there are no union contractors that perform it in New York. This new law will exclusively only allow union contractors to bid in the city of Kingston. It'll greatly reduce the number of bids received by the city, and as a result, will cost the taxpayers a lot of money. I hope you seriously consider how this will affect the taxpayers and many of our employees that reside here in the city of Kingston. Thank you.
We don't have any other speakers that have signed up. We're also out at the thirty minutes, but I could call for a motion to extend it if there's anybody else in council chambers who would like to speak. Anybody on Zoom who's listening, if you would like to speak? All right, then I will close. Oh, I... Council members, it's been thirty minutes, so can I have a motion to extend? Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, seconded by Rita Worthington. All in favor? Opposed? Come on up, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Got it. My name is Mike Gambino. I'm thirty-five. I went to Kingston High School myself. I was once in the union before coming here to Arold. I didn't prepare a speech. I wasn't going to talk. But standing behind me, these people, they're amazing people, all right? Most of us are right here from Kingston, went to school right across the street. This proposed idea of shutting us down is just, it's painful to listen to, you know? I can't believe it. I mean, I'm taking pride in working for my community that I was raised in. This is just sad. It's a sad idea. I just want you guys to see it too, because these people behind me, myself, we got families. This is, it's going to affect all of us if you allow this law. Again, I don't have a piece of paper in front of me. I didn't plan this, but just please consider this. We take pride. We love our community. These guys behind me, they're my family too. Just keep that in mind, please, when you're making your decision, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other speakers? Right now, I will close public speaking, but before we go into the rest of the business, if I did cut you off and you had more to say, feel free to send an email with your comments to our clerk, emtinty@kingston-ny.gov. You could find it on the website. Also, just a clarifying point, there's no vote on this tonight. It will be at Laws and Rules on the twentieth. The committee will be discussing, so no action is taken tonight on the resolution that the majority of you were speaking about. And then lastly, we are about to head back into our normal government proceedings. You are more than welcome to stick around. It's actually going to be a short meeting, so we don't have much further to go, but if you want to leave, we take no offense. However, this building has wonderful acoustics, including in the stairways, so it's very loud and it's hard for us to continue. So if you do leave, if you could please leave quietly. Thank you very much. We're now entering into Claim and Communications. Hearing no discussion, they will be on file in the clerk's office. Can I have got a motion to dispense for the second reading of the general bills and pay theme? Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, seconded by Michelle Hirsch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted seven to zero. We're now entering into the report of committees, starting with Resolution Number 146.
Resolution 146 of 2023. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of $2,452.27 in the Assessors Department to balance accounts.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 147, please.
Resolution 147 of 2023. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of $23,100 in the Housing Department to cover the administrative fees of Emergency Tenant Protection Act.
On the question? Hearing no... Alderman Bob Dennison? You faked me out there. Anybody on the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 148, please.
Resolution 148 of 2023. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of surplus properties to the Kingston City Land Bank.
On the question? Alderman Bob Dennison?
I rise to endorse this resolution.
Bob, I'm sorry. Can you just hold the, bring the mic with you? Thank you.
I rise in support of this resolution. I think it's important to transfer property to the land bank. They've done a great job getting rid of zombie properties and providing opportunities for affordable homeownership for new home buyers. I support it wholeheartedly, and I would encourage my fellow alderpeople to do so as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 149, please.
Resolution 149 of 2023. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending the city fee schedule for planning.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. That concludes our communications. Don't get used to that. And it also concludes our meeting, but before we adjourn, does anybody, does anybody have anything else? Alderman Rennie Scott Childress, and then Alderman Steve Shabbett.
I'd like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Patricia Ann Brune, mother of several great people here in town. She was born in 1944 in Bay Ridge and ended up locating to Stone Ridge before moving into Kingston. She graduated from Kingston High School and afterward became a nurse, where she worked at Benedictine Hospital for quite a long time. She was able, even while working there, to receive her Bachelor of Science from SUNY New Paltz, and she's ended up working in a number of places. She met her husband, Mike. They were married for some fifty-six years, and then she moved back to this area after a bit of time working in New York City, and then she was at Benedictine Hospital. She's the devoted mother, wife, rather, to J. Michael Brune, and then the cherished mother of Judy, Mike, and Annie. So she was active in several community organizations, including the Benedictine Hospital Auxiliary, the Junior League of Kingston, and the Ulster 4H, an organization which she, where she enjoyed mentoring young women. She's been a very important influence on this community, and she will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Rennie. Steve?
Thank you. I'd like to close in memory of Andy Perpetua, just recently passed away after very long illness. Andy was a lifetime Kingstonian, born, raised here, went to Kingston High School. Soon after, went to work for Hudson Cement, and then on to IBM, where he retired. He was active in quite a few sports in the city. He was a big bowler, liked to golf, played volleyball. Softball was actually where I met him, playing city softball league, and Andy didn't shy away from arguments about balls and strikes, I can tell you that. He leaves behind his wife, Jean, his two daughters, and a very long list of nieces and nephews and other relatives. The other is Mike Sawick. Mike battled cancer for two or three years, a really awful battle, but I have to say, it didn't keep him from walking his daughter down the aisle. She was recently married, and Mike made it to the wedding and walked her down the aisle. Mike spent all of his time pretty much with his family. He loved his family a lot. The only other thing he did was, he was a big hunter, longtime member of the Ruby Run and Gun Club. He leaves behind his wife, Patty, my cousin, a son and a daughter, five siblings, and many nieces and nephews. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? I will then take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Carl Frankel, seconded by Rita Worthington. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then we hereby stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on October 3rd, 2023, at 7:30 PM. Thank you.